...chair of the peace poster contest this year with our lion tamer Alan McGaspy. I'm not sure she's got the camera. Lion Chaplain Don Fleming is a valuable member of the committee. And our president, Lion Bradley Rojas, is here this evening to help us present the awards for the peace poster contests. And we have our lion tail twister, which are all funny names to all of you. Erin Strauss is here. Erin is also the one who handles our student speaker contest for the high school kids. We want to thank you and your staff and the staff of Holy Angels and Our Lady Perpetual Schools for once again allowing us to offer this program to the students of Daly City, Colman, and Broadmoor. Our judges this year were Lion Carol Clatt, Daly City City Manager Pat Martell, and Lizette Tran of San Mateo Credit Union. Our awards are sponsored by Allied Waste Services of Daly City once again this year. And we're joined tonight for the presentation by Stephanie Ragler representing Allied Waste, who was also voted in as a new lion as of today. So we're very happy to welcome her. We received 135 entries this year expressing the theme of peace, love, and understanding. And the judges really had a hard time just picking three. Our first place winners are receiving a $50 Target gift card, a plaque, and certificate. And our second and third place winners are receiving certificates of appreciation. We also have a certificate of appreciation for each of the participating schools. I did take some pictures of the posters before they were sent on for up the ladder for judging. And I don't have the best camera in the world, but you can certainly see how extremely nice the artwork was for each one of these students. So without further ado, we'll get going with the awards here. And we'll start with Ben Franklin. And I believe Ms. McKittrick is here. So if you'll join, please. Bradley and Stephanie. Third place goes to Eureka Soriano. I told you guys I'd misdo your name. No, Bradley, third place. Would you turn around, honey? Get a picture? Second place is Raymail Bayanan. Did I do it badly? Yeah, I did. I can tell. Okay. And first place to Ava Mehlberger. And then we also have a certificate for the school in appreciation of allowing the students to participate. Yeah, for the school. Okay, from Fernando Rivera, third place is Shontae Borella. Not here? Okay. Second place Caitlin Mahia. Didn't come either. Okay. Yeah, okay. So if that's the case, then Ms. Shea, would you come up? And we will present first place to Samantha Torres. Thank you for your patience. Okay, from Holy Angels School, we have Kathy Lee and the art teacher are both here. Okay, all right. With a last name like Kelly, I've got a bad start to begin with. And our second place recipient, Maria Fuerte, could not be here tonight. And our first place award goes to Kalani Rose Velinueva. Now, I don't know if there's a representative from Our Lady Perpetual Health here tonight. Is there? Second place to Gabriela Rodriguez. Thank you very much for the opportunity again to do this. And we look forward to doing it again next year. Thank you.
Students, please don't leave. We do have some additional certificates for you. Board members, you may...
Could we say something?
Yeah, certainly, of course.
I just wanted to thank the Lions Club for doing this all the time. And Denise, I'd like to ask a question. How many entries do you get?
We had 137 from all the schools this year.
Wow.
And remarkably, we only had four that had to be disqualified.
Ah.
Because the students wrote on the front of the poster.
We just got passed out copies of the winners. And for all of the students that are here that qualified this evening, your work was outstanding, absolutely outstanding. It was beautiful.
We have more color like this in our meetings.
We were very impressed this year.
Are these for us?
Yeah, certainly. Absolutely.
Definitely want to showcase this.
Yeah, no, I mean, I wish that my printer did a better job, but, you know, you do what you can do.
Definitely gets the idea across.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
They are beautiful.
Okay, so don't leave everybody.
Yes, okay. You want to go ahead and...
Sure. So this is for Our Lady Perpetual Health.
Oh, you got Holy Angels, okay.
Okay, Holy Angels.
I think one is not here, right?
Yeah.
Kalani Rose Velinueva.
I didn't see all of a sudden you were just...
Okay, thank you very much. Great job.
Go ahead, Mr. Waters. As soon as they're done with their photos.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We're allowed to say the full... Actually, I didn't tell him that.
Marie, were you saying the whole name?
Rachel.
You can do them all. I did both.
Hold on. Yeah, I just wanted to do the same thing.
They signed a permission.
No, no, I just wanted to do the same.
I forgot to check those. I'm not sure which ones from Ben actually... Oh, actually, yes. On that certificate, not on the flyer.
And we have certificates for Caitlin and Shontae.
So, yeah, I'd like to say a few comments. So thanks to the students who participated and to the many students who participated and were not able to be awarded. I'm sure the art was wonderful. Thanks especially to both Ms. McKittrick and Ms. Shea for coming tonight. I think it means a lot to your students. And thank you for the work that you've put into developing an art program that can produce these kinds of results. Thanks also to the art teacher from Holy Angels and for the work that you do there for our community. Thank you.
Oh, yes, thanks. Thanks once again, like everyone has already said, for coming out. You know, they say a picture is worth a thousand words. And we definitely need more positive images out there. If we turn on the news, there's enough negative images and violent images on TV. So I'm glad to see this beautiful artwork.
Yeah, I think I would just have to go along with what they all said. It's wonderful to see that. It's wonderful to see the art, great to see some art happening in our schools, even if we have to have a little help from the Lions to get there. And I really love that this is art that's about making the world a better, more peaceful and loving place. It just doesn't get much better than that. So thanks again for coming. You are, of course, welcome to stay for the entire meeting. You are also, we totally understand, if you do need to go home at this point. So let's give a big round of applause for all the artists.
Forgot I shouldn't release them until after we have the comments. Yeah, I keep forgetting. Oh, well. We'll just give people a moment to settle. And then we do have our comment period. Okay, we'll just, the rest of us will stay put. Just for a minute. So while we're getting some, we could probably go ahead with the comments. We'll just, we'll just take a couple-minute break here until Mr. Ali gets back. Then we have our teachers left, some of them.
So we had Fernando and Ben, the two schools. What happened to...
I don't know.
I'd just like to say that the peace posters are beautiful. And all the students have left. And I think it's wonderful, because if it's not brought to them for a challenge, then it could get swept under the carpet. And we can kind of forget to celebrate peace and to think about ways to have it. And I think the pictures are beautiful, and I look forward to seeing them again next year.
Ms. McCullic.
So I also want to echo what everyone else has said about the posters. They were pretty spectacular. But just some reminders to folks. Elementary school sites are having their parent-teacher conferences next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And we're piloting the Common Core report cards. This is a work in progress. So the report cards will look a little different. And so we just want to make sure parents are aware that this is new and it's a work in progress. And then also tomorrow night is our Parent Involvement Advisory Committee meeting at the district office, 101 Lincoln Avenue, starting at 6:00. And we're going to talk a little bit about the LCAP, which I'll share a little tonight, and some ways to get involved at the school sites.
Yes, I'd also like to really congratulate the students who won on the peace poster contests and the art teachers for the incredible job they do, not only for that, but for our district and for the Lions Club for sponsoring this again. After the report cards and parent conferences, we do have a break for Thanksgiving. And it is the entire week of November 24th to 28th, there would be no school.
Board members, acknowledgements and commendations are, looks like I should start at this end.
Pass.
You pass? Okay.
I'd like to acknowledge, pardon me, and commend, first of all, the cabinet members and, in particular, Ms. McCullic. I attended part of the institute, the math institute. And I was able to see some of the, one of the trainings that was taking place. And wanted to also commend James Parish, principal at Ben Franklin Middle School, because they have the next-level academic program. And I attended that session as well. And it was really interesting to see how the school wanted to address the, I guess, the academic achievement gap for African-Americans at the school. And they started this program, but they opened it up to all students. And there was a good turnout. Also, Ms. Dews was there. And I think that we should support that program and possibly see if we could expand it to some of the other schools. And that's it.
Well, just again, I love these pictures. The artwork is fantastic. And again, thank you to the teachers who supported them and encouraged them to use what I feel that almost every one of these is imagination. It's amazing what they took the topic and what they came up with. They're not all the same, but they're all beautiful, wonderful. So my compliments to that. Other than that, since I missed a couple of meetings, did we ever close our meeting in memory of Al Thalia?
We're going to do that tonight.
Well, I'd like to say something about it if I can at a certain point.
Now or... You could now or you could at the end, if that feels more right.
Yeah, I think I'd like to say something now, just kind of under comments. I just want to make sure that we are able to close the meeting in memory of Al Thalia, who was originally was working in a school district down at San Mateo. And then from there, he became a school board member at Jefferson High School District and then elected to city council. He's done a tremendous job working primarily for children. Everything he did was children-related. And he had a way to ask for help, that everyone just did it. And it's just remarkable. I was cleaning out some boxes of things that I've been keeping for years because I can't move anymore in my house. But anyway, I came across some beautiful cards that he sent me. And it's just brought back the memories of things that we had worked on before. So I would like to, you know, honor him. There was a celebration of life for him in this room. And it was amazing that a number of people came out for it, former council people and other people in the county and other, even from San Francisco, that came to honor the work that he had done. He received a Jefferson Award, which is one of the highest awards for volunteerism. And I hope that we never forget this, the man that did so much for... And I hope that we never forget this, the man that did so much for libraries, students, children that didn't, were disadvantaged. And we're going to miss him very much, so just wanted to say that.
See, definitely the case. I just wanted to make a couple of public service announcements. One of them sits on my mind because I went and got my flu shot today. 'Tis the season. If you haven't done it, go get them before the flu gets you. And I'm having a senior moment because I can't remember what the other thing that was in my mind a moment ago was. The flu shot's probably good enough for right now. That contributes to our drive for improved attendance. Because if you're healthy, you can come to school. And if you have the flu, you definitely can't.
Well, I also have a public announcement.
Oh, okay.
I just was asked to remind everybody, and so I'm going to pass you guys down. A copy, if you haven't already gotten it. It's an invitation to the family education night at Fernando Intermediate School. And it's, the subject matter is moving on to high school to find out what our local high schools have to offer and how you can support your child with this big transition. Please join us. We're a workshop to learn about the great school options in the Jefferson Union High School District. Meet teachers and counselors from those schools. Learn ways to support your child's transition to high school. And it'll be held on Thursday, November 13th, like tomorrow, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be free dinner and childcare provided. And they do ask that you at least fill out the form and let them know because I think they want to know how much food to prepare and if you do need childcare. So, even though it says reply by November 7th, if you decide to come, still reply. You can call, the phone number is (650) 278-0442. And that is Mae Chan Brown, and she's one of the representatives helping with this. This is also presented by our union, AFT 3267 and AFT 1481, which is the high school district, in partnership with Fernando Rivera PTA, PT, PTSA. So, this is what we're trying to do to help all our students with evenings like this or afternoons like this where we can help the parents, help the children make the best decision for their future. Please go.
Yeah. That's also very timely because it is coming on to the season for students in eighth grade to be deciding which high school to go to. And that is an important decision for them. That's an extra, yeah. Okay. At this time, we have persons wishing to address the board and I do have a speaker card from Ms. Melinda Dart.
Thank you. Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. I don't have to announce the parent ed meeting anymore, but since that was taken care of, but it is tomorrow night at 6:00 and people can still attend even though they haven't RSVP'd. I just wanted to thank everyone in the community for voting, those that did vote. Even though this election statewide and nationwide had a very low turnout, we actually exceeded the average in San Mateo County. We had a 34% turnout, which sounds low, but that exceeded the rest of the state. So, there was a lot of work that went into this last election. Out of our San Mateo Labor Council, there were 243 total volunteers. That included many teachers from this district. We had many teachers and parents involved in the elections from this district. There were many evenings spent working on the election and precinct walks. And I'd just like us all to think about in the future, let us think about how we can put more of a value and maybe put more energy into our education around the importance of voting. And I know that we're striving to make everyone college and career-ready, but let's think about also making students' community-ready, which means, you know, ready to be a citizen and ready to vote and to know something about the history, right? So that, and not just the history, but the present and why it's important, right? And let us put our heads together over the next year to think about how we might emphasize that again in education. Because when we have the best turnout at 34%, you know, that's, that's good for us, but it's not enough.
Sad commentary.
Yeah. So, let us work on that together. We want to see more people voting in Daly City in the future.
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
Melinda, I would like you to know that Broadmoor at our precinct, we had more people who voted this time than in the presidential election. So, that meant they were there for education.
Yeah. Wonderful.
Yeah. So, we're real pleased with that, even though it wasn't, you know, 3,000 people.
Okay. And Mr. Vidalis, do we have correspondence and comments?
Yeah. So, I too would like to acknowledge Mr. Telia. He was, as Ms. Burzwell mentioned, a great friend of education. Some of the things about him is, well, he was first introduced to me as Mr. Daly City, not by himself, the folks who were introducing me to him. And I suppose that was the name that he went by in many circles. He, for our district, he was among the first officials, former officials, to endorse Measure I, which I thought was very helpful because he is a leader in our community. And with his endorsement, other leaders also felt like they could endorse Measure I as well. One thing is that, let's see, what did I say? Oh, yeah. I think that, you know, he leaves very big shoes to fill for current and future leaders of Daly City and I'm sure that many of those that he mentored and worked with will attempt to fill those shoes. We need great leaders at every level and every place. And one of the areas that he was most active in at the very end was the Daly City Public Library Associates, which is a nonprofit organized to help support our Daly City public libraries. And I think folks can still get involved there if they want to see ways, seek and follow in Mr. Telia's footsteps. Let's see. So, the board may or may not be aware, I can't remember if I've notified you, but the organization Chevron Energy Systems that we entered into partnership with to help put in all of our solar generating facilities in the district was purchased by another organization. So, it was purchased from Chevron, so it's no longer Chevron. We no longer have a partnership with Chevron. Some people are happy about that. We now have a partnership with Optera Energy Services, Optera. And they're a greener organization and thought this would be a great thing to have in their portfolio of services. But one of the things I wanted to let the board and the community know is, as a result of the solar panels going into all of our schools and the energy that's being generated there, we have, to date, the last five months when they started collecting data, we've generated 109% of the expected generation capacity of the panels. So, we're doing about 10% better than we thought. Again, we haven't hit the winter months when there's less sun, but so far, that's, that's pretty good. And what that translates to certainly at today's current electricity rates is about $280,000 of, if 100% would be $280,000 of savings. We've actually saved $132,000 more than what we expected to save by this point. So, thanks to the board for doing something good for the environment and our community. And I think this board serves as a model to other public agencies that can be engaging in similar projects in their agencies. Also wanted to share, last month, it's been a month already, close to a month, Ms. Dart and I had an opportunity to attend a conference together. It's a joint labor management conference. I can go over.
I give you permission to go over.
A joint labor management conference. And the focus of the conference was how to work in collaborations between employees and management. There's a lot of great ideas that surfaced from that and ways that we're beginning to collaborate and work together. And then also, just as a comment to Mr. Ali, the next-level academic program has been opened to all schools. And so, many schools have invited families, though they're not Ben Franklin students, to attend as well.
All right.
And so, that there, and I don't know if any have attended, but I know that there have been some very, some invitations to families.
To attend at Ben Franklin, but from other schools.
Come from different schools.
Oh, great.
And I know it's always hard to get yourself, especially across town, to get to a session, but some schools did make a more concerted effort to extend their invitation.
All right. With that, have we made an effort to try to have that program at other schools as well?
We haven't yet. We haven't, this is a partnership that Mr. Parish brought through his relationships with, with the facilitator. And so, we've, this is the second year that Ben Franklin's done it. And so, we're sort of looking at the results of that, what the benefits are and if it's, if it might be something worth expanding or at least setting up satellite trainings. So, it's different parts of the city.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vidalis. Okay, this brings us to general functions. The consent agenda, I want to note that because there were no comments or changes made during the first reading on the board policies, we put them on the consent agenda. If there are things you want to discuss on it, we can, we need to remove it from the consent agenda.
Okay, let's go ahead and.
So, you would like to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought you might. Okay, so, we would need, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the board policy items removed from that.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Nope. Okay. My little circles on here, know where I am. Item four, the call for nominations for the CSBA Delegate Assembly. This is a reminder that it's the time of year that if we would like to consider nominating any local board members for the delegate assembly, this would be the time to let them know and get in those applications if anybody has any thoughts or comments on that.
I would ask that those applications be returned to me by December 1st so they can be prepared for the next board meeting. We do have to get this in right at the beginning of January, so we have one board meeting to go. So, if you've spoken to someone and you feel like you want to nominate them, then get, there's some personal stuff, the individual nominated has to supply, so come by December 1st would be great.
And unless there is further discussion, that's merely informational to remind us. And we can move on to item five, the tentative agreement between the CSCEA Chapter 233 and the Jefferson Elementary School District regarding the classification and compensation study and 2014-15 salary schedules. And this one's a mouthful. And would you like to address that?
Sure. I'll get started, anyway. Just to refresh our memories a little bit, back in April, the classification and compensation study was completed. And this, as far as the classification part of the study went, we were looking at job descriptions again, since many of them were so old to get things updated. There were a lot of meetings with employees and chances for input into that. The compensation part of the study, we were looking at the median market salary, you know, from districts around us. And we then needed to negotiate with CSCEA how the study would be implemented, and we did complete that. It went to the last personnel commission meeting for their, for them to do their part in this, which is approving part of the job descriptions having to do with the titles and the experience that is required for the jobs. So, it's ready to come back to the board. And what was recommended by the study was that the positions that were below the market median value should be brought up to that median value as far as what their pay would be. So, that is what's being recommended in here. And one of the backup documents, since this was done last year, what is recommended in the Exhibit H1 was last year's salary. Since then, there's been a 5% increase that you, as the board, approved back in May of 2014. So, that, we would need 5% more than what's listed on that particular chart.
Any questions from board members?
Well, I asked a few questions before the meeting started about this, because I was concerned about some of the duties that may have been added to it and the fact that whether it should be considered reclassification or just a classification study. So, I think Bernie's going to get that information back to me so that, you know, get a ruling on that. Because it makes, it makes a entire difference, a difference in how it's being presented. So, and then so my other question is, were the duties actually voted by the board? All of these?
They would be voted on today. This is what, this is what we're voting on today.
Okay, so, we're voting on the duties of the positions?
Right. You're voting on the tentative agreement and by doing that, you're approving the duties of the jobs.
Well, I know. It usually comes the other way. You first vote on the, so I'm just asking because I missed a few meetings, so I want to be sure.
This is what you vote on the duties.
So, so you're, by doing this, you're going to be voting on all the changes?
Correct.
That's, yeah. Okay. Kind of putting it all together, but that's all right, I guess.
I want to clarify that one of the reasons we want to put it together is because these salary increases are retroactive and these people don't get them until we approve it.
Oh, no, I understand. In fact, this has taken a long time, which.
It's taken a very long time.
Yeah.
So, we'd like to expedite the process.
So, the only thing I was concerned about is whether any of them fall under reclassification, but Bernie will find that out. Okay?
Could you kind of explain what you're?
Well, there, according to the education code, if you're looking at a job position and there are added duties, it's considered reclassification because you've brought that position up higher. And that's what usually merits a change, maybe in the title as well and also a pay increase, which is okay if this is what's happening. But the difference with reclassification is the person that's serving in that position must have served in that job for three years to be able to be reclassified. Otherwise, it has to be open and tested. And I just was asking that question, having served on the commission, having the knowledge that if that's the case, I just wanted to ask.
Is it a new position or is it a promotion?
Well, it's not like it's a new position. It's new duties. If new duties are added, it's different, it's just like an extra piece of something that's, you know, explained. But if it's actually new duties, it brings it up a lot higher, then it's supposed to be considered reclassification. So, it's, it's just the way it's handled. So, I just wanted to ask if that, if that was discussed, if that was handled or what happened. And he's going to get that information from me later, so.
I'll get it to the full board.
Yeah, go to the full board. Thank you. Thank you. Not just me.
Are you okay with moving forward?
Well, I am because I don't want the employees to wait any longer, but I just think that we need to make sure we have done it correctly.
I just had a tiny question. Were there any positions that were already at market median value or above and did they get, did they get a raise also?
Most of the positions were above the market median. And so, those, it's, what the recommendation is, is they would continue with their current salaries as of this year with, you know, having had the 5% raise. But they got a 5%.
Everyone gets the 5% raise.
We also had one, two positions had had very similar duties, so as a result of the, of the classification study, we just merged them both to the same range. So, because the duties were very similar.
Yeah.
No reason why. It should be two different pay ranges.
That's right. All right. Well, I make a motion that we approve the tentative agreement from CSCEA Chapter Number 233 in the Jefferson Elementary School District regarding the classification and compensation study and 2014-15 salary schedules. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Congratulations, folks, you get paid more.
Well, wait, no, the next one does it.
Oh, actually, you're right.
The next one, the next one does it.
Just one moment more and you get paid more.
Actually, the next one doesn't really, doesn't, the next one just is our annual, the annual affirming of the salary schedules based on past board action.
Yeah, actually, there was.
Number five is the congratulation for the, this one now reflects, reflects that board action and all the other board actions that we've taken since last May. On a yearly basis, we do that. Many employees have, have been audited by the retirement agencies and so they always need the latest board-approved salary schedule when they retire. So, this is our way of making sure we have that documented.
Great.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion that we approve the salary schedules for district and. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the salary schedules for district employees, the administration recommends approval, oops, wait a minute. Wait a minute, the salary schedules for 2014-2015 school year, it sounded like it was more than one, but it's one?
It's many salary schedules, it's for all of our employees, eight, eight different salary schedules for the, for.
Oh, so that's including.
All of our employees, yes.
Including all of you guys, everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so for all, all district employees, is that alright? I'll put the all in there.
All minus the superintendent, yes.
Um.
So we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, we've got a second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Well, finally, you guys are going to get some.
It's all official, it's all pretty. Okay, item seven, Personnel Commission Reappointment.
Oh, yeah. Can we just make the motion?
Yeah, this is to reappoint Dennis Shreve to the Personnel, School District Personnel Commission.
Well, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Dennis Shreve as, um, the Personnel Commission for a reappointment, and to be effective for a three-year term, beginning December first, 2014, and congratulations, doing a good job.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Shreve, thank you for your service, we're very, um, fortunate to have you serve in this capacity, and it is a great service to the district and to our employees.
I, I should really explain this, this wasn't our appointment, we're just confirming it.
Right.
Acknowledging it, because it was the employees, right?
Would you like to say some words, also a few things I want to thank?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to thank the CSEA, uh, Chapter 33 for the reappointment, for a three-year term. Um, also, uh, I'd like to thank Mrs. Hopkins, and also Georgia Law and Clarida Lauderdale, and Roberta Livey for the great job they do in the HR department. Uh, their following of the merit system practices, I think are outstanding, and I just want to thank them for that. And also, I want to thank the board for the support of the Personnel Commission, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. And thanks for your public service.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're moving right along here, Section Two, Curriculum and Instruction, Item One, Acceptance of Donations.
I'll do it.
You'll do it, okay, go for it.
Alright, we'd like to thank, uh, Jeremy Marcus for a hundred dollar gift card and 11 cases of water, and he's the store director of Safeway in Westlake Center, and that was for Institute Day. Also, a thousand dollars, we are thanking Philanthropic Ventures Foundation, uh, a thousand dollars for a field trip to the Children's Discovery Museum, and also for a trip to the Elcus Ranch. And thanks to Life Touch for $736 to be used at the school.
And it goes on, I'm going to have to.
Oh, it goes on.
Philanthropic Ventures Foundation for Math Manipulatives 500, Silicon Valley Community Foundation for a Field Trip to the National Rodeo, $750, Save Mart Supermarket Share Program, a hundred dollars and 26 cents, uh, $293.98 from Genentech Inc., and Mrs. Na Leguan, 9228, and the Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign. And miscellaneous school supplies from Ms. Christina Collins, Slim Jim Bin from Ms. Shannon Hokama to be used in the staff room. Slim Jim, that's.
What is that?
Beef jerky type.
We feeding up our teachers?
So thanks for your donations, and we really appreciate it.
And then we need an actual motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion that we approve all of the said donations.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, approved with thanks. And, Section Two, and I see Ms. McCoolick is ready, we are getting an update on the Local Control Accountability Plan.
Yes, so as you know, the Local Control Accountability Plan was approved by the San Mateo County Office of Education late summer, and so I just wanted to provide you an update on, um, what we're doing for this year and what our plans are for the future. And so just to remind everyone what the LCAP is, the Local Control Accountability Plan, it's a plan that we're required to disclose how, uh, we are using the Local Control Funding Formula, um, for a high-quality education. And we have two ways that the district is funded for our LCAP goals and actions, one is the base grant, and that's for just the general district operations. And then, um, a lot of the funds also come from supplemental and concentration grant, and that is specifically targeted for, um, students, English learners, children performing below grade level, to expand those services. Um, and so, within the LCAP, we have to address these eight priority areas, they have to be in our goals, and we're, we need to be, we're held accountable to them and to report out, um, and it's on student achievement, engagement, school climate, um, implementing the Common Core State Standards, um, parent involvement, making sure students have access to the courses they need. And then, we need to make sure that we have to have annual goals that include these eight priority areas, and we have to, um, for all students as well as numerically significant subgroups, and that's students with 30, 30 students that have valid test scores in a, um, student group, foster youth, it's only 15 students that we need to, um, account for. So just a reminder of what our district goals are that we all approved, um, we have improved student learning outcomes, getting our students ready for college and careers, recruiting and retaining high-quality staff, and making sure that they are, have opportunities for professional growth and training. Um, third goal is to make sure our facilities are safe, our environment, our learning environment is, um, efficient and secure, and all of the grounds are, um, well taken care of, for students and staff. Goal number four is technology access, making sure that we are keeping up with 21st century skills. And our fifth goal is making sure that the broader community is engaged, and we're communicating with them. And so, um, these are the goals that we've had, um, actually for quite a few years in this district, and they really encompass, um, our full district program. And so, um, what we're going to do is have some meetings to make sure that these are the goals that are still relevant to our district, and so, um, and then also looking at our actions, and so, you'll notice I had it, the slides switched, so you're probably looking at, I switched the slides. So, um, this is the first meeting that I'm sharing this year's goals, and we'll have in, in February, we'll, I'll meet again, so that you can provide some input, and gives your, um, the public and the board can give input on, um, our goals and actions. And then, our Administrative Council will, um, share this month, as well as throughout the year. Um, and then our leadership team, our instructional leadership team, which is teachers from every school site, two teacher leaders, an administrator, we're going to talk about that in January and February, so you can just see AFT, we're going to have a meeting, CSEA will have a meeting in February, so a lot of this work will come in February and March. Parent Involvement Advisory, we'll talk about it tomorrow night, as well as in February, March, school sites will talk, and then our District English Language Advisory Committee, and then we'll have some draft reviews. So in February and March is when we're going to be looking at the data, so we had these goals, we have these actions, and so right now, we're collecting all the data, and so in January, February, March, we're going to look at the data and see how our students are performing, academic data, social, you know, data, some surveys, parent surveys just went out, um, on school climate and academics, and so we'll, and staff surveys, student surveys. So we'll be collecting all that information, sharing it with the public, um, and all the stakeholders in February and March. And then, we're going to be drafting our goals and actions for next year's LCAP, 2015-16. So every year, it's an annual, um, process, and so, um, once we get all the input from all these different groups, then we'll have a draft review in April, and then, we're going to bring that draft to the board in May, and then, for review, and then we'll have a public hearing in the first June meeting, and then, in the second June meeting is when it will be approved, and that will include the budget. Um, I believe the budget comes in the first June meeting as well as the draft, is that correct, Ms. Kessler?
Oh, yes.
Alright, and then, oops, and then, then it goes to the, um, San Mateo County Office of Education, once it's approved by the governing board. So that's just kind of the groundwork for the year, and how we'll be collecting information and getting, gathering input. And so, um, some things, just so that, to remind you, some things that we have included in our LCAP this year with the new LCFF funding, is we've, um, every school site received additional funds to, um, add staffing for intervention and student support, specific to their needs, so the school sites received, you know, a significant amount of funds, many school sites chose a student support resource teacher to help work with individuals. Um, some school sites chose deans, some school sites chose to have more time for their resource specialist teachers at their schools, so that they can work with students, and then some schools chose counselors. We also, actually, all schools chose a counseling program, some sort of counseling. Um, we also increased staffing at the district-wide level, so we have more coaches in our English Language Arts and Math Departments, um, we have librarians, uh, we have three positions open, two were filled, we still have a position for one of our middle schools open, so if anyone knows anyone that is looking, um, to be a librarian in our district, and then also to increase our library aides and custodians. One, um, position I failed to put on here was, we also have our program specialists for student services, um, that was an additional, um, district-wide staffing position that's helping with our parent involvement and, um, positive behavior intervention support, so suspensions, expulsions, trying to reduce that. Um, so that's another district-wide service. We had a huge rollout of technology this summer, um, purchases as well as personnel, we had over 1,000 student and staff devices deployed out to, um, school sites, we're working on upgrading our infrastructure, so the, the network, um, because we're going to have a lot of people online, and right now, uh, we don't have the bandwidth to support that, so we're working on that, and so, um, that's something that is going to be, that is funded by the new LCFF funds. We increased our technical support with all the devices, there's, you know, troubleshooting we need help with, so we have more support staff in our technology department, and then, we are currently, we posted a position for a Technology Integration Director, because we need someone to help with the curriculum integration with technology, as well as the technical side, so that position is posted, so if anyone is interested, um, please apply. And then, we've also increased, um, the professional development sessions, we have a lot more professional development offered, uh, we've had a lot in the last couple of years, but this funding is actually helping, really helping support that, so that we make sure our staff is ready, um, for the Common Core.
Um, Ms. McCoolick?
Mm-hmm.
The technical support personnel, how, how many, um, employees do we have in that department?
We have, so we have a data analyst, that's been in existence, we have a technology coordinator, full-time. And then, now we have three, um, technical, what's their title? Tech support? Um, we, we had one and a half, and now we have three.
So are the three full-time?
Full-time.
Alright, that's good.
Total of five in that area.
Five, yes, and then with a technology director to help oversee and support, and move our district forward with technology, because we have a lot of, um, things coming from the Common Core and.
And that's up from two and a half, right?
So.
Can we invite them to come? I've never seen the new tech people.
Well, you, once we hire the tech director.
You invite all of them to come?
Um, sure, we can invite them.
You can always go visit.
Yes.
Well, yeah, I'm just asking.
I'd like to ask, now, you said library aides, do we have library aides in every school?
So, I believe that's what was just approved with the classification study.
No, but I'm asking, do we have anybody in those positions yet, no?
No.
Okay, but we will.
Some, some, yeah.
We have someone for every school, it, like last year, they were split between two schools, but now that we have a new job description that we can test for, because it does require more computer skills here, now we can go ahead and test for the, add seven more library aides. So there would be one at each site.
It'd be nice to have one at each site.
Certainly would.
And then the other one is custodians, are, are we, do we, are we up to par, remember we did away with every other night thing, or whatever it was, and do we, do we have someone now that will be at the school every day?
Yes, that was, that hiring happened in August, so we could start the year with, like, all our night custodians back, as far as the number of night custodians.
Okay.
So that was all from the LCFF, so that was new this year.
Okay.
Great.
Just want to make sure it's working.
Deepen it up.
So our next steps, um, as I said, we're collecting the data for all of our goals and actions, and we'll be sharing that, um, with our stakeholders in February and March, and so, after we see the data and we look at it, we analyze it as, you know, a collective, then we need to revise or reaffirm the LCAP goals that you saw earlier, and then, uh, we need to update our annual progress or actions, so some of the actions might need to continue, some might need to change, we might need to add some, um, and then, we might, we're, we need to possibly, probably, identify additional resources based on our budget projections, um, for the LCFF, um, and the activities that go with it. And then, final board approval on June 24th, as I mentioned, then it goes to the county July, by July 1st, and then, they let us know by October 8th, but I think they let us know in August this year, I believe, or September.
Have you been approached by the ACLU about what we're doing in this area?
Not yet.
No, alright, because they, but they, they might be approaching our district, because they, they've been approaching a lot of districts to see what they're doing, and.
In regards to?
To the LCFF, and.
In regards to what, though?
Um, just making sure, I mean, the LCAP, making sure that districts are really, I think what they're mainly looking at is, um, involvement from the community, and how, you know, how effectively the districts are, you know, utilizing that power, and, um, so, but I, I've assured them that our, our district is, you know, kind of leading the way in some of our practices, so, uh, but I was just wondering if they had contacted you, alright, you either, alright, that's good.
Yeah, so I don't want to hear that, is what you're saying.
I do think that our, our LCAP is, is posted on our district website, and it does describe fairly thoroughly the process that we underwent to complete it, so I think if someone looks at our LCAP and reads it, then they would see what was done, and so.
And you, and Mr. Vidalis mentioned, when our LCAP was approved, that, um, we were one of the few districts that had very little changes to our LCAP, that it was pretty well, um, put together, and so, um, a lot of districts actually had a lot of rewriting to do. Um, so we, we, you know, the process worked for us.
Yeah, well, they're looking to get districts to collaborate and work together, so that every district has a good plan.
Tell them, look at our website. So that's it, so, yeah, um, there's just information updates are on the Curriculum Instruction webpage, access through our district, and then the LCAP is on that front page on the right side, um, underneath our LEA plan, and so, if anyone wants to see it, they can see, um, what we did, and they actually changed the template for next year, so, um, I'm, actually, I believe next week, Ms. Kessler and I are going to a training to learn the new template. We just learned it, now we've got a new one, so, but we'll be sharing that with you in upcoming meetings, too.
Great.
Any questions?
I have a couple.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, real basic questions, as far as district goals, goal one, improve student learning outcomes, what specifically are we wanting to do?
It's based on academics, so, um, English Language Arts, math, English lan, English language development, um, science, social studies, just, uh, looking at student results, student test scores, um, and using, you know, interventions, and monitoring student achievement through, um, data analysis, through teachers looking at student data, and then, um, we're using the Response to Intervention model, multi-tiered system of support, to help support our students, starting with first, um, uh, good instruction, and making sure that we re-engage students when they're not, um, accessing the, the content, and then, um, just using lots of those strategies, but we're monitoring it through assessments, is that what you're asking?
Uh, oh. That answer part of it, I'm looking at, because our goal is to improve learning, how do we know?
Through the assessments.
Learning, because.
You measure it.
Testing is not always indicative, so are there other?
Multiple measures, we don't just use the state testing, we use classroom assessments, we use, um, you know, teachers have informal observations based on, you know, uh, listening to a child read, or, uh, an exit ticket as they walk out of the classroom of, of what they learned with a simple question, um, or it could be a more complex assessment, so there's, they don't just use one measure, they use multiple measures.
Okay, and then the other question I had, goal five, engage and communicate with the broader community, how?
How, so that's something that we're really trying to work on, and that's what, we're having our new program specialists, um, student services, Stephanie Martinez, really help with that, and having community events, and she's already, um, working with, uh, different folks to have community events, and then also, um, using our Parent Involvement Advisory Committee, we want to really build that, it's, you know, the attendance has been really low, and so we want to, um, try to find ways to build that, she's actually talking tomorrow night about the parent project, um, which is a way to get parents involved, and so, she's actively seeking ways to engage families in the community.
Something else that I, um, I didn't get back to you via email, but I s, got back to, uh, the other gentleman, as far as, um, what's that committee, the wellness committee?
Oh, uh-huh.
And I think this is a really good opportunity to help build the, uh, the bootcamps that I'm wanting to do for the community, because that could bring some of the parents and the students in, and get them involved in that, and that can help filter over.
So I would recommend, I can. So I would recommend, I can give you contact information for Stephanie Martinez, who is our program specialist for student services, so she can connect with you to, you know, think about how we can engage the community that way.
Okay, beautiful.
Yeah, and as far as community engagement goes, we have lots of different audiences, right? We have our school communities, our parents and our children, and so that's one tactic that we have to take. We have our staff and our employees, and so we have other forms of communicating with them. We have the broader community who's not involved in education, that we have to figure out, how do we engage them? Because oftentimes, outside resources exist in that sphere.
Okay.
And so, you know, sort of thinking, how do, how do we engage other folks who may have an interest in education but are not directly involved? They don't read our, our school newsletters, they don't read our district newsletter, so how do we engage them? So there's different pieces, and so we're trying to work on.
Okay.
Kind of attack, I guess if I could use the word, but I don't like the military word, but I, sort of a, sort of a plan to, to be able to get our message out to a variety of audiences.
So my next question would, to counter that, is how can we support you guys in that effort? What are some things specifically that we can do to help that?
I think specifically would be, you know, you, certainly you carry the message of the district with you wherever you go. And so, you know, the people you meet, the people you shake hands with, you know, let them know one or two things that are happening in our district that might pique their interest where they wanna find out more. That's one thing.
Okay.
There may be opportunities in the, you know, perhaps in this next LCAP where we wanna think more strategically about this communication piece. What else do we need to help get our word out, and how, you know, what kind of activities can we engage in, so being supportive of that.
Okay.
And then I think as far as the board is concerned, where you might wanna know, where do you guys insert, you know, your ideas and your thoughts? So definitely in January, February, we're gonna look at our goals, to revise or reaffirm them, that that's, certainly the goals, I'm not sure the goals will change too drastically, 'cause, you know, we worked really hard on them the first time, and I think they're still good, 'cause they're still goals, we haven't gotten there yet. But, you know, thoughts about ideas for activities to insert in those, that we could then incorporate into the different community meetings, where every, the whole community can weigh in on that idea of, you know, let's, for example, let's say, you know, bootcamp for parents engagement. You know, and if it's gonna have a cost or not a cost, whatever, but the whole community can engage, is that something we want to, to pursue? And then it comes back to the board with the community input.
Our district has a very close relationship with the Daly City Public Partnership as well, and so that's a community engagement group. And so, actually, Jessica Face is on the board of Daly City Public Partnership, and she's part of our district as well. So, I mean, that's another way to reach out to the community and have them share with us what resources are available, too.
Is there a way that we could just have a simple, like bullet points of what our greatest successes are every school year?
Well, that's what will come back in January, February, when we look at the data. We're gonna take a look at what the actions were, and what, how did we measure success for that action, and then we're gonna show that data. So that will come, and we have, we're required to do that every year for the LCAP.
I mean, one that's a little simpler just for us, so that, like Mr. Vidalis said, yeah, when we're out in, you know, in the community.
Oh, like, uh, soundbites, or?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
We can get something to you, not by this Friday, but by next Friday.
Monday morning? No.
It'll come in your information bulletin.
Alright, great.
So you're trying to see how you can get the community engaged, is that what you're saying?
Or, well, yes, that's what some people are saying. What I'm saying is how we can get the message to more people, mainly about our successes. And then if there's challenges, like what we did to address those challenges. So whether it be in the media or, you know, just out in, out and about in the community face-to-face.
'Cause we want, we want the community involvement, is that what part of this is about, right?
Yeah, well, the way I understood Mr. Ali's question was, you know, how can he be supported to be able to be a messenger for our district?
Yeah, no, that's a different item, but earlier, Mr. Waters said, to get the community involved, is that what you were saying? Yeah, so there's lots of ways that we can do that. It's whatever we're, when, what we're involved in, or what we, where we go and we are able to talk to people is to try and engage some of them to, to join. Brown World Property Owners Association has engaged with Garden Village VTA, did a tremendous event, and it brought the community together as well as the police department, the fire department was there. And I never saw so many happy children and happy parents to know that everyone's working together. And, and those are the kind of things that we need to go out and find out where we can get the different areas to do so. I think Woodrow Wilson engages with one of the local churches, and they do some amazing health stuff. So those are the kind of things of trying to get members of the community that probably don't know they're needed, and try to engage that. And sometimes parents can do it, 'cause they can tell you if you're talking to them. So I like what you're saying, too, but if we have a list of things of some of our accomplishments, some of the things that are happening in the district, we can tell other people, you can do it, too.
Exactly.
So that's what we really wanna do, is get everybody on, on, on board to say, kids are important, education is important, and what can they do to bring it all in a circle? That's how you're gonna get more donations, that's how you're gonna get more people wanting to help.
That's right.
Okay, so enough of that.
Yeah, and that's it, exactly.
I could go for hours.
You know, wherever we are, whatever other organizations we're a part of.
Yes.
And thinking about how they're connecting, you know, I've been working with the DCPLA, the Daly City Public Library Associates, on the book sale. And you'll be hearing about, everyone will be hearing about this soon when we've nailed down the details, both of the book sale, but also a art contest for our elementary students to be part of that group, because that's, as far as I'm concerned, anything involving books is a no-brainer to be connecting with the schools. So between the schools and the libraries, we should have a, a constant give and take. In any case, we could probably, all of us go on all night about that, so instead I will just say thank you very much for the update, Ms. McCulley.
But you know what, I think it would be a nice idea if a few of us got to, if we get together sometime and talk about it, 'cause we can't do, we can't do it here all night. But maybe we can share ideas and start working on it.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Okay. Make sure I don't miss anything here. Section five, classified personnel, we have a retirement. There they go again. Somebody manages to do this every meeting, retire.
Oh, I know, I know. Well, you know what? They all got hired about the same time. Okay, I'll just make a motion to approve the retirement request from Eileen Bennett, special education aide from FDR, effective October 31st, that's a long time ago, 14, and requests an appropriate resolution be prepared, commending her for her years of service with the district, and she's been, well, I don't have to say how long she's been employed, but...
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for the years of service, and congratulation on your retirement, Ms. Bennett.
Yes. We're done.
Word member comments.
And that brings us to the board policies.
Oh, yeah, she took it off, that's right.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't get to discuss it. Okay, so bear with me, I'm BP, I took it out of the thing, and I'm not sure I have it exactly in the right order. BP 0410B. Did you guys find it? First paragraph. I just wanted to know why we're not doing this annually, and it says regularly. Regularly doesn't tell me how often it's gonna be done. The word regularly was replaced, it said annually.
Correct. So the reason is because we do this on a regular basis. I'm not sure that we do it on an annual basis, sometimes it happens more than one time a year. And, you know, when we read these board policies, I just wanna make sure that it always gives us enough room to, to wiggle. Because whenever there are conflicts, board policies are always referred to, and if we have not done exactly what the board policy says, it, it, it can leave us open to some kind of liability. So I changed it to regularly, just 'cause I didn't want to be confined to an annual, necessary annual review.
Well, to me, it just means that something's gonna go on for a long time until it's finally taken care of. And I feel that it's important that we do look at something, and annually is, to me, is not too little. But we need to look and make sure that what we're doing is, is adequate, and we'll, probably doesn't happen very often, so we, it's, there'll, there'll be things that will, we can look at. But I just didn't like saying regularly, 'cause it does not tell you anything, doesn't pinpoint when it is. And also that, at the last sentence, that the reporter, the superintendent, or designee of your findings and recommendations to the board as appropriate. And that doesn't tell me what that means either. I would think that if you're reviewing something, that would be, that's when we should find out about it, not just as appropriate. What, what does appropriate mean to anyone? It doesn't explain to me. Does that mean that you'll investigate things and we don't have to know about it? Or what does appropriate mean?
Well, appropriate means...
I mean, I know what it means, but in this case...
So in this case, and the way that I would interpret it, is that an appropriate item that would need to be reported to the board would be when we need to undergo a big change in a program because it was found to be a barrier for some identified group. I don't have a problem with saying annually, I think we can maybe say at least annually, because like I said, these programs are reviewed on a very regular basis. Individuals with, with disabilities are, are, are always making the district aware when something is not accessible to them. And so we review either the program or the facility or something, so...
If you change it to at least annually and take out regularly, then I would go ahead with as appropriate.
Okay, so I'll take direction from the board on that, and...
That's fine with me.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
I think that gives you the flexibility to do it more often, but prevents it from being left to go on too long.
But what, the, these reviews, I mean, what does that entail? You and a cabinet member going out and interviewing people?
Honestly, these reviews are, they're just based on concerns or issues that are brought, brought to my attention on a particular program not being accessible to any of the protected classes. And we review the program and say, is, is it, you know, an aspect of the program or the facility that's keeping the accessibility thing, or is it something else?
Yeah, so if you do this annually, and there's nothing that has been brought up to you, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna?
They won't have much to do, right?
Well, yeah, I'm not saying, I, it will happen annually, because it does. I mean, in my last five years here, at least a couple of times a year, we review some programs, some, because individuals feel like it's inaccessible or not available for them, and they're, they're...
In actuality, this is done as needed.
Well, yeah.
To say that it will be done at least annually means that even if nobody's complained, it needs to be, we need to kind of make sure that we're...
Or it could be, nobody's complained, so I guess it's okay.
Then it's...
That's, that's a review, that's an heads-on review.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, and then reporting to the board when there's something that the board needs to take action on. If it's something simple, like there's a mat that's forming a mound at the beginning of an office, making it inaccessible for wheelchair. I don't think the board needs me to report after I've reviewed that. But if it is something that says we need to fix the incline of a ramp approaching a school building, that would need board approval, because it would exceed my capacity, so...
The incline of a ramp approaching each school.
Okay, we probably did that.
She was good with that.
Beat that to death, but anyway, so everybody's okay with it, then?
Yeah.
Okay, so then board policy BP 3312, business and non-instructional operations. Give you time to find it.
Search. Yes, I see it.
Okay, so everybody got it? Are you still looking?
I'm getting a bunch of ARs here.
Oh, this is the white copies?
Well, they're all white on mine.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah, just go ahead and...
Okay, so the paragraph says, the first paragraph, whenever state law, anyway, it talks about the contracts. And it says, "All contracts above 50,000 must be approved or ratified by the board." Presently, it's 35.
Correct.
And I just wanna know why the big increase.
So this board policy has not been modified since 2008, so it's been close to seven years. And in seven years, the cost of services have gone up. So there are opportunities, when it was at $35,000, there were opportunities for us to negotiate with contractors, to say, well, if you can get it under $35,000, we may be able to do this and start this quicker, 'cause everyone always wants to get business. And now that's like, they laugh at us and say, no, I mean, everything costs around $50,000 nowadays, so that's one thing. The other thing is just puts it in line with what the spending authority would be for a public official without a board approval. So 50,000 is, is where the state rule is on that.
It never was, there was never a cost, 'cause all contracts were approved by the board until a few years ago, like you said, when someone decided to change it and make it 35,000. And so as a board member, I, I like to at least know what the contracts that we're, that we're engaged in, and not find out that we've got all these contracts over $50,000, and we...
Well, if they're over 50, then they come to us.
I mean, under 50, sorry, under 50, because you can do a, a whole lot with under 50. And then, of course, there's that, that situation where they do 50,000, and then three months later, come back and do another 50,000, and that circumvents the law and the rules.
That doesn't happen.
Well, I like to say...
It does happen.
Not here.
Yeah.
Same, same vendor, same services, same is, is considered a, same year is considered an aggregate amount, so here it doesn't happen.
I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, at least we, as board members, should be able to see, each time there's a contract, under whatever amount of money you're gonna vote on, looks like it's probably gonna go pass anyway.
Well, we can, we can provide the board...
But we don't get that constantly, and I...
Well, the way that you get it is when you approve the warrants.
Well, no, but that's not it. When you approve a contract, we ought to be able to get something telling us, you approved a contract for this much with such and such, so that we're aware of it. So we at least know.
Sure.
Because that doesn't give us an opportunity to question something or ask something, because it's too late.
I think that...
So I think on a quarterly basis, that could be doable. There are contracts that are approved at the site level, there are contracts approved at a department level, there's contracts approved at a district level. So I think on a quarterly basis would give us an opportunity to do that.
But it's, if we have a question on it, it would be too late once it's approved.
Well, that would be the case if I tell you within one day, or if I tell you two weeks later.
I, I just wanna say, I fully support, first of all, the 35,000, and I don't think that 15,000 is a lot more to add to it. And I, I would like the superintendent and the administration to have a little more options when they're negotiating with the contractors. But I also do think that we should be just informed in a timely manner when it takes place.
Yeah, exactly, thank you. Well, that, that was my big concern, too, is not finding out till way after.
I think part of the issue is that there are a lot of very small contracts, and do we want to see every contract for a copy machine repair person or what have you?
No.
You know, maybe, maybe it's the ones between that 35 and 50 that we feel like we need to see. I mean, I personally don't need to see the ones for, you know, a couple of thousand dollars.
I wasn't asking for that, I was asking that we'd be at least notified at the time that it's being done, that we just know about it.
But I'm not sure that I even need to know about every tiny one, because then the ones that are really important are basically lost in the noise.
So what about, Mr. Vidalis just said maybe quarterly, would that be?
That would be fine with me.
Wow.
What about Ms. Rizwell?
No. I, I don't have to see the whole contract.
It's micromanaging.
No, no.
And that's not what we wanna do.
No, it's not that, it's, I wanna be informed of what's happening in the district.
Quarterly is, is a good compromise, 'cause we, we hired them to do a job, let's let them do it.
It's, you know, I don't wanna put onerous reporting requirements on our administrators either. If we're going to say that they can approve, you know, that Mr. Vidalis can approve contracts up to any given amount, then we are saying, we trust him to do that. Yes, maybe we want to know about it, but...
That's what I said, I wanna know about it.
Right, but do we need to know right now, or can we allow it to be done in a manner, in a, on a timeframe that allows aggregation of that so that he can give us a report with a bunch, rather than having to spend a chunk of his time every week or every day putting together reports of, we did, you know, this thousand dollars here and that, you know, five thousand dollar contract there.
Alright, well, I did hear something about the one, the contracts that come in between 35,000 and 50,000, that maybe by the next board meeting, you could just let us know? could just let us know?
Well, I have, I don't have any now.
The bigger ones, not the little things.
I don't have any now, because I don't have the authority to do that.
Right.
Over thirty-five thousand dollars.
No, no, I mean, not the next board.
But, but, no, no, he's saying-
If it happens, by the next board.
It's gonna happen, so yes.
So, you're suggesting as a compromise, that a contract over thirty-five thousand, but under that fifty thousand cap, would be reported to the board?
I mean, we sometimes have some of that stuff already, you sometimes give it to us.
I sometimes mostly inform you through the information bulletin of what's been going on.
Yeah.
I do think I can follow the guideline between thirty-five and fifty to inform you, because those are the ones I'm aware of, because those are the ones I have to approve. Nobody else has the authority, so at least I can be consistent and inform you on that. Any other contracts that you're interested, when you look at the warrants, if you look at object code fifty-eight oh one, that's an outside contract, so, there you go. Every month when you approve the warrants listing, it's right there.
Alright.
But do you, you don't approve it every month? I mean, you approve the big, you approve the initial contract, and then we just see when the payments.
We see what it is.
Yeah, no, that's, we already know about that one. Okay, so the other one, I wanted you to explain to me what this, the district, down in the middle of the pages says, "The district shall not enter into a contract that prohibits a school employee from disparaging the goods or services of the contracting party." Can you explain what this, is that duplicating of?
I'm not sure what that means, but that's an ed code.
Did you find out?
That's an education code citation right there, so it's probably-
Let's find out.
Frankly, it seems fairly straightforward to me that it would mean that we, if, that we cannot contract with a vendor who says, you only have the contract if nobody in your district, nobody, once you sign this, nobody in your district is allowed to say anything bad about our company. That would mean that he signs the contract, and Mr. Moser can't say, you know what, Chevron's Big Oil, or, you know, whatever. So, that seems like, that's a protection for basically our free speech rights.
Yeah, I like it.
That wouldn't make sense to me. I mean, I couldn't, at the top of my head, I didn't know what it means, but now that I think about it-
Okay, I get it, I think I just didn't read it right either.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, well, I would agree with that, we should, we should hear from our employees.
I would say, we cannot enter into any contract that impinges on our free speech rights.
Okay.
We'll put it that way.
I agree with that, a hundred percent.
Here, here.
Okay, do we have, okay. I think someone just was asking, so, I got a lot of question marks here, I'm so sorry. So, okay, this doesn't have a page, dang it.
Which is, which, let me see, here, okay.
I'm sorry, I took it out of the binder, and it's like-
So, in, at least online, here on mine, it's page seven.
Page seven, okay.
Do you know under which board policy it is? We're still in that same board policy, I just scrolled down a little ways.
Because it's all about contracts and stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so, under item number two, did you find that?
Yeah, under the, under the heading of the Citizen Advisory.
No, it's not there, it's up here.
Oh, okay, which one, which one? Okay, too many item twos.
I know, I know.
Yeah, so-
And there's no heading on this for me, so.
Yeah, there's no heading anywhere. Oh, under contracts for non-nutritious foods or beverages. And I really hope we don't have contracts for non-nutritious foods and beverages.
I think they're talking about the soda machines.
Put a lot of energy into the wellness committee for years about that. Okay, so then, item two.
Okay, so it says, "Procedures to ensure," did you find that?
Yes, I got it.
Procedures ensure that district personnel do not handle cash or product at the school site. The contract shall specify that the vendor stocks, okay, so those are vending machines.
Right.
And then, so, they're saying that we cannot touch that machine or the money and all that, is that what it is? Is that's what's happening now?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to know, is it happening now? Okay, then, the next one was, okay, "To ensure that funds raised by the contract benefit districts, benefit district schools," and, and this is for gifts, grants?
Well, that's comparing to, we're still talking about our non-nutritious food sales, as far as I can tell.
So, anyway, so it's what it says, "The superintendent or designee may form a committee consisting of parents, guardians, students, staff, and interested community members to make recommendations regarding the contract." Is this what we're doing, or we're supposed to be doing?
When it comes to-
For non-nutritious foods and beverages?
Well, that's what, that's what she says, we're under that.
That's what the section is still under, yeah.
So, do we do that? I haven't heard that we-
We have contracts, we do have vending machines still.
Well, I believe that most, where we do have vending machines that are selling non-nutritious foods and beverages, they are usually sponsored by the PTA. They're the ones that bring it into our schools and our staff rooms, so, so there's the committee with the parents involved.
Okay.
Okay, so it said we need some internal communication with our PTAs.
The district does not, does not place vending machines in staff rooms that sell non-nutritious foods and beverages, that is generally-
Junior highs and high schools?
It's, well, we, we don't do it for students at all, it's generally in the staff rooms.
Oh.
So, yeah, we cannot sell non-nutritious foods and beverages.
It doesn't explain that here, so I just, that's why I'm asking the question?
So, you want to just add the language in there that says, "In staff rooms," or something?
Well, that's, I mean, it's, you don't have to add that. We don't have to add it, it's already in our board policies and the law, that, yeah, you can't sell that stuff to the kids, so.
Well, see, to me, this didn't say anything differently, so I thought, well, how are we doing this, are we not doing it?
Right.
What's going on? Okay, I just thought it sort of stuck out, like, okay, and the other one, I don't think I need to answer on that one. So, this goes on about this, but, so, basically, the next page on item four, it says, "The superintendent or designee shall ensure that the contract does not limit the ability of student and parent organizations to plan and operate fundraising activities." Does that have to do with vending machines again?
That has to do with the sale of non-nutritious foods and beverages, yes.
So, it's okay for us to sell that?
No, PTA can't sell it either.
After, half hour after school, right?
Yeah, they can sell all the junk food they want, half an hour after school's out. And they do.
And again, and again, this isn't actually referring to our policy about those sales, but to the question of whether a contract with an outside vendor, like, that would stock the vending machines, could say that the students can't sell candy bars, which is a moot point, because we say they, although we do, I mean, we have those chocolate sales, they just aren't allowed to sell them on school grounds.
Yeah.
Or door-to-door.
Right.
And they do go door-to-door, by the way?
Yeah, they're not supposed to, but.
Okay.
They come home.
Yeah.
They come to your doors and they're home.
The policy is that they don't sell door-to-door, but we can't necessarily monitor whatever student does.
Right.
Okay, so, what is the electronic products or services that's listed under?
A little farther down that page.
Further down on that page?
Contracts for electronic products or services.
Yeah, what is that? And it's something about, that you can't do advertising for the students?
What would that be, internet services or something?
Unless the board enters into a contract, notice at a public hearing, I mean, that really kind of threw me off, I didn't know, what are we talking about?
On which section are we talking about?
Just a little farther down, bottom of page twenty-nine, there's a section there headed, but not very clearly headed, "Contracts for electronic products or services."
Yeah, should be underlined or something.
It looks like that would include everything from reader boards to internet service providers.
Okay, so, the board does have actually a separate policy on advertising and logos and things of that sort. Basically says, no, we can't do that. So, we would not be entering into a contract that would force someone to see a logo or something like that.
Because, I mean, it goes into saying about-
It has advertising.
A contract at a public hearing and all this, it sounds like it just was a whole big avenue of things here. If we don't do it, or we don't need it, then why is it here? Because it says that we can. If we-
Well, I think if there was a particular service that we were really excited about, that we would come to the board and say, approve this service contract, because it does violate our current board policy, but you guys can make an exception.
Right. But I thought that we would have to have an open public hearing, we've noticed, before we do that, so that parents would have the option of saying, hey, you know.
So, you just want to leave it here, so we're not doing this yet?
It leaves the option open.
This made me think that, did I miss something?
Yeah, and it would have to be one that requires the dissemination of advertising to students, and I don't know if we have any of that. We, I don't think we do.
Okay, then, then that just answers the next page, where it says that the parents have an opportunity to request in writing if they don't want their child exposed to the advertising, so, we'll forget that. And then, I wanted to ask you, why, and is it because this is in another section? The section that says, Board Policy five-one-four-five point three A, it says, "Non-discrimination slash harassment," and all of it is Xed out, is that because it's in another section?
So, the next policy there is, they moved it into an administrative regulation instead of a board policy. So, that doesn't mean that it's okay for us to discriminate and harass, it's just been moved to a different section, so the existing board policy is deleted and an administrative regulation is developed.
Okay, that's what I, I kind of thought that was what it is, okay. Then the other one is, oh, okay, so then, on AR five-one-four-five dot three A, we go down, and it says, the first paragraph, "The following position is designated as coordinator for non-discrimination to handle complaints regarding discrimination, harassment, intimidation, or bullying." I was wondering why it's given to the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, rather than not having it possibly under a person in charge of students, student activities and stuff?
It's not always a student issue. It can sometimes be an employee issue, can sometimes be a community issue. So, human resources is all of our resources that are human. So, that's the way that I interpret it. So, sometimes when it does fall somewhere else, and that might be handed off to another person to investigate and follow up on.
So, if it's-
But that's the point person of the district office who receives the complaint, or-
So, if it's a student against a student, it still falls in the same area then? Is that what you're saying?
She could pass it on.
When it becomes a formal complaint, yes, it's received by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Oftentimes, they don't become formal complaints, that they're settled at the school site with the principal. Other times, they're settled, you know, with the Director of Student Services, you know, so, but there's different levels of complaint, and the formal complaint is a very specific kind of complaint.
Well, in this case, we're lucky, because Jan was a principal and everything, so, I mean, she, she has the knowledge of doing it, but I just thought, if it's here, and it should ever be someone else that's not, then I just want to know if this is okay, to do it that way? Okay, and I think I'm almost done, guys, bear with me. Of course, you're lucky I don't have to read all the ones that we, don't have, the ones that Bernie said I didn't have to do.
Yeah, good thing we got, told you about the blue.
Okay.
So, if it's owl versus squirrel, that would be a different department?
So, it would be human resources.
That would not be human resources, yeah.
It would be called one, child related.
I don't know if one of them would actually be able to write a complaint.
SPC, or what it is called? Call the guys.
Not in our jurisdiction, so.
And pretty much, we're not really involved with the, of our teams and our games that they're talking about, whether, if you don't have, if you don't have a sport that is offered to girls, they can play on the boys' teams? Do we ever have that coming in our district?
We do have that possibility, we do allow that.
But we do allow it, okay, good. All right, so, I'm almost done, I'm almost done, guys? Okay, oh, and I'm very happy to hear that we have, we do have in place about head injuries, having that taken care of immediately.
Yeah, we'll be putting that in place as soon as you approve it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, all right, thank you so much. And then, okay, one more, parental notifications, having to do with athletic competition. That's all scratched out, does that mean it's someplace else?
Well, I think some of those are like, very, very related to high school.
I thought that too.
Because I refer to the CIF, California Interscholastic Federation, which is a high school organization, so that's why.
We don't do it.
So, we don't do it, okay. I'm done, I'm done. Thank you for bearing with me.
And this was one that I think I might have mentioned when we looked at this before, that I think every parent should read, every person should read that discussion about the concussion and head injury, because some of the things it talks about are things I would never have thought of as-
So, what we will do, this year, what we'll do is make sure that every student who participates in a sport gets one of these signed before they continue to participate in a sport. We will include this in our annual notification to parents, and make that one of the sign-offs that they agree, that they've read, and that they understand that. So, we'll just get everybody that information.
Just as a public service.
Yeah, no, I think it's wonderful, they really do need to know, because it's such a shock when something like that happens, and they all wonder why, you know?
Well, and just, like I said, there's, there's things on that list of signs to watch out for, that I would never have thought would be an indication of a head injury, you know, so, it's like, oh.
Well, thank you for allowing me to do all this, I didn't have time to find you.
So, there was a minor change there with the at least annually.
Yes.
Right.
I believe that was the only, only change, so, if it's fine with the board, I think we can approve it as a second reading.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of the board policies and administrative regulations, February two thousand and fourteen.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, that brings us to the bottom of our agenda. Are there any further board reports?
I don't have a report, but I want to make a comment, and just offer my condolences to the family of the child at George Washington Elementary School, passed away. It is, there are no words that I can even say that would, I couldn't imagine, second grader, that's, that's the worst thing a parent should ever have to go through, and I just want to offer my condolences to that family.
I agree.
Just for the board to know, I did send a note to the family when we heard of the incident, and I believe we'll be closing in that student's honor tonight as well.
All right, I just wanted to say thanks to the district staff that are still here, and it's nice to see a couple principals here as well. Thanks for coming.
If you have anything further to say.
No, I just want to say thank you, guys, bear with me, that I had to go through all this, these things, but it just popped up, like, what is this?
We worked it out, we resolved it, so.
Yeah, perfect, thank you for allowing me to do that. And thank you, I can't tell you how much Melinda had worked so hard. She was down, I was working at the polls, and she was coming in, doing her little thing, and trying to get the word out, and thank you, because it made a big difference. Made a big difference, thank you.
Thank you.
And I actually finally remembered the other thing I wanted to say earlier, so I will say it, about those new grade sheets, just a big thanks to the teachers, and know that, we know, I've heard from enough of them to know that this is a big change, it's a lot of work doing those, so, everyone, give them credit for, for working hard, and cut them some slack if it's not perfectly smooth. You know, we get it, it's, it's new, and it's, it's time-consuming, so we may have to work on that.
And there should be an announcement that Ben Franklin is having their annual flea market?
Oh, their rummage sale?
Rummage sale? Oh, they all call it something different, and it's going to be held December, oh dear.
I heard a voice over there, did somebody know? No, can't remember the date either.
Well, Melinda might know.
Watch this space. Sometime in the next few weeks, I've seen posters, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I'm not sure if it's, if it's the thirteenth, the tenth, or something like that, but, um, it really needs to have support of everyone, because they will make money for the school, so.
The thirteenth is a Saturday, so it's likely the thirteenth.
Thank you.
Okay, well done.
Good guess.
Okay, and I have no, um, no speaker cards for anyone further wishing to address the board, so we would like to close our meeting, as, as we've discussed tonight, in memory both of Nathaniel Angelis, who's the student from George Washington Elementary School, who passed away a couple of weeks ago, and also, in memory of Al Thalia, who is Mr. Daily City, and I have a little piece to read here about him. That Albert M. Thalia was affectionately known as Mr. Daily City. Al dedicated his life to helping others in the city he loved. He spent most of his career as a government servant, establishing many programs throughout San Mateo County. He began his longtime career with the San Mateo Union High School District, and retired after thirty-eight years as an operations manager. The first office Al held was on the Jefferson Union High School Board of Trustees. He served three terms, and also served as the board president. He was elected to the City Council of Daily City, and served five terms, and became known as Mr. Mayor. That probably was a precursor to Mr. Daily City. After twenty-six years in elected office, Al retired and took on the role of the legislative aide to San Mateo County Supervisor Mary Griffin until two thousand. Al received numerous honors for his outstanding service, and continued to be active in community organizations like the Daily City Public Library Associates, and he was, I think, in a sense, the founding member for that group, which is putting.
Actually, the president or chair.
Of, the first president, yeah, um, for a group that is doing a lot for our public libraries. So, and that, I would like to have that moment of silence for Nathaniel and for Al Thalia. Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.